If you please rise and join me in the second pledge of allegiance.
Let's hope it goes better than that.
Mr. Villa Lobos, would you like to do the TV coverage announcing, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County of Santa Barbara television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Ines Valley, Santa Maria, and Orchid areas. Re-broadcast of Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. Now for the roll call. Commissioner Burrows?
Here.
Commissioner Idelson?
Here.
Commissioner Overall?
Here.
And Commissioner Gosdinker?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Phillips is absent today.
Next item, we have the agenda status report, please.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This morning, we have two items on your agenda. The first is the Westmont College Master Plan briefing that we give to you, your commission, each month that you meet. And we also have the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance and Extension. And we expect that we'll probably be able to conclude our business this morning. Would you like to move on to the projection part?
Please.
I think at our last meeting in July, I had indicated that I wasn't sure that we were going to need the September 22nd meeting of the Montecito Planning Commission. I hope you did not make plans for that date because it turns out that we do, in fact, need the commission to meet on that day. We have two items, the LUMIS Recorded Map Modification, that is an application, private application, we're going to bring forward to the commission, as well as a briefing on the housing element, which we would like to conduct in September, as the board will be hearing this in October. So, we have at least those two items, plus our standard Westmont College Master Plan briefing. I hesitate to say that we may not need the October 27th meeting, but I will go ahead and say, it's not clear to me whether or not we'll need to meet, so I'll have to inform you next month as to whether or not we'll meet. I am going to try not to have, well, actually, we do have November 17th set as a potential hearing date for the Montecito Planning Commission. That is not the fourth Wednesday of the month, as that's the day before Thanksgiving. So, we've rearranged, and if we need to have that meeting, it would be that week before Thanksgiving. And likewise, in December, we've also shifted your meeting to the third week in December, to December 15th, in the event that we need a meeting, because the following week is just right before the holidays.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. The next agenda item is public comment. Public comment period is reserved for any item that the public might wish to discuss that is not on the regular scheduled agenda. I have one speaker slip, and that's Mr. Thorndike.
I'm going to start this with a letter of April 16, 2007, from the county council at the request of the Board of Supervisors. And I'm just going to give you a brief on it, because it's four pages long. Dear Mr. Thorndike, as requested by the Board of Supervisors, the county surveyor and I would be happy to meet with you to further answer your questions. Please let me know if you would like such a meeting. Yes, I would, and I've never had it. That is a meeting with the county council, my council, me, and particularly the surveyor. All right, now, parcel in Toro Canyon, you are the owner of a strip of land half-mile long, which has aerial photos, surveyed parcel lines may be slightly different from those shown on this area. I'm going by memory, because my eyesight's poor. The county, but that's it. The county assessor has established the acreage, and it has been assessed with a de minimis value, and therefore is not taxed. Now, there's no difference between this letter, it says, and the May 9, 2005, letter.
Mr. Thorndike, let me interrupt you for just a second.
Okay, now, I'm going to jump away, forget that whole thing. I just had one question, and it's on page two. And then, and that's for Ms. Black, because I don't want to deprive her of answering a lot of, this tax business. Note, parcel 15 was an original of five parcels, taxed, taxed as such when purchased from Roy Rogers and Dale Evans Rogers. Now, I want to know, that was 42 years ago, what change was made and when on my tax? Okay? Now, now, today's paper, The Sound, has the Democrats blasting oil drilling at the Forum. And that's the DoubleTree. It is Wednesday, August 25, and Daily Sound's Page 1 caption is "Dems Blast Oil Drilling at Forum." And why not? After all, the Dems are now in full control of onshore drilling. Now, how did that happen? Well, I helped them get it. I will admit it. I helped them get it, from the US EPA. This is in South County, where US EPA and California Department of Fish and Game have partnered, I do mean partnered, in writing, to get county to take and flow well water for mutual government benefits. Now, that's against the rules. At the county's southern entry into Las Padres National Forest, excuse me, I slept under the stars last night, and my eyes are a little bit blurry. Thank you very much for your time. How am I doing, Ms. Black? Pretty good? Okay. Any questions? Any questions?
I think so. Thank you, Mr. Thorndike.
I think you got a mouthful.
Mr. Chair, if I could just ask Mr. Thorndike to provide us with the date of the letter, that would be helpful, and then, just to let you know...
That four-page letter confirms a May 9, 2005, four-page letter, and it's essentially the same thing, April 16, 2007.
And, Mr. Chair, you haven't asked me to respond to Mr. Thorndike's question, but I thought it might be helpful. I don't know why the tax rate may have changed on Mr. Thorndike's property, and if he would like to inquire on that, he would need to check with the tax assessor.
Right. Through the tax board, did I hear?
With the tax assessor's office.
Oh, okay. But, you know what? You ought to know about these things, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You haven't heard about them.
Moving on to the next agenda item, it is the review and approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which was July 28th. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? I have a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the minutes.
I have a second?
A second, Dan.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Next item, we'll move to Dr. Russell for the Director's Report on the Board of Supervisors' actions.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. The last Montecito Planning Commission meeting was on the 28th of July, if I'm not mistaken. So, there were two supervisors' meetings, on the 3rd and the 10th, that I have to report on, plus some other follow-up items. On the 3rd, we were scheduled to take our greenhouse gas analysis thresholds to the board for a report, but we decided that it was premature to do so. So, although that was on the agenda, it was withdrawn from the agenda. We'll be finalizing our greenhouse gas thresholds soon, and taking them to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration. It's a new requirement in SEQA that we actually analyze greenhouse gases. We set a hearing for September 14th for Chapter 24A, which is the designation of alternate hearing officers for appeals. It wasn't absolutely explicit that the Director could designate alternate hearing officers, and so we want to make that very, very clear and very explicit, because it was, the issue was raised. There was another consideration of the Land Use and Development Code modifications that are being proposed by the Coastal Commission, and the board decided, finalized, a letter to the Coastal Commission, which requested certain additional changes to the modifications as proposed by Coastal Commission staff. And that meeting did take place at the Coastal Commission monthly hearing held in San Luis Obispo in August. And briefly, what transpired at that meeting was that, after the staff report was given, there was direction provided by individual commissioners making comments, but ultimately there was a unanimous vote to continue the item to the November hearing, which is going to be in the Los Angeles, Orange County area, to give additional time for our staff and Coastal Commission staff to meet with the public. And we're in the process of planning some additional public outreach to do two things. One, basically, we heard loud and clear from the public that they did not feel that they had been adequately informed and had been adequately part of the process of the consideration of these changes, which will have some effect on properties in the coastal zone. And in addition, it will give us an opportunity to perhaps refine the proposed modifications a little bit more. And so, that's what transpired at that Coastal Commission hearing in San Luis Obispo. If you have any questions on that subject, we would be happy to answer them.
I do have a question. There was a long laundry list of items that, at least when we heard it, that were still on the table. Some of them, I think, to us, to the commission, seemed to be quite important. Others were, perhaps, didn't rise to the level of being critical. And I'm just curious what the major sticking points are that still remain. I know you'd indicated in a previous report that some of the items had been resolved, and I just wondered if you could quickly give us a feel for what the ones that are still in play are.
Mr. Chair, Diane, would you care to address the question?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'll try my best. I haven't given this an ounce of thought since the Coastal Commission hearing, as I was on vacation. I believe that the Board of Supervisors concluded at their first meeting in August with a number of items that they reached consensus on, amongst the board members, and a number of several items that they did not reach consensus on. But they were all of concern to the board and had not been resolved by the Coastal Commission. The majority of them dealt with agricultural properties. So, the first was the level of exemptions for new agricultural expansions and uses. The second dealt with grazing, and I think that has almost been resolved. The third dealt with animal keeping, both in agricultural areas and in residential areas. The Coastal Commission suggested in their recommended modifications that animal keeping be subject to an appealable coastal development permit within residential zone districts. So, anybody who wanted to keep a horse in the coastal zone would have to apply for an appealable CDP. The final agriculturally-related item, I believe, was the limitation on residential development on agricultural parcels. And we resolved, I think, to most people's satisfaction, the size of the residence. We resolved the tenancy of the residence. In other words, either the agricultural operator or the owner of the property could reside on the property and only require a CDP be processed for a residential unit. The remaining issue that the board did not reach consensus on is the limitation on the size of the development area allowed on an agricultural property. The Coastal Commission suggested modifications indicated that 10,000 square feet would be the maximum development area, regardless of parcel size. And others suggested that perhaps there should be a sliding scale, but as I indicated, there wasn't consensus at the board. There was also not consensus reached on the way to address stairways. I believe that the board was concerned about stairways and making all stairways legal, non-conforming. The Coastal Commission staff went some distance in trying to provide repair and maintenance for stairways, but would not allow wholesale replacement. I think the board was somewhat unresolved on that issue. Schools was also an issue that was not completely resolved at the board level in agricultural zone districts. The Coastal Commission staff recommended, in their suggested modifications, that schools not be allowed in agricultural zone districts, except for continuation and expansion of existing schools, and provided some clarification as to what expansion meant, and that an expansion could occur on adjacent properties owned by the school district, and indicated that those schools would be considered legal, conforming uses. The board opinion ranged pretty widely on this one. Some board members believed that schools should be allowed by conditional use permit in agricultural zone districts, and other board members, on sort of the other end of the spectrum, thought that expansion onto adjacent parcels should be limited to parcels that are owned by school districts today. And then, I think the final issue was principal permitted accessory uses to residential uses. Which is a mouthful. The Coastal Commission staff initially identified about four items that they thought were accessory to residential uses and could be permitted with just straight CDP, not a CDP that would come to your commission. Those included pools, garages, you know, pretty typical things. They heard our concern that we have many more accessory uses to residential development than just that limited set that they had selected. And so, they basically said, you know, everything that's accessory to residential uses would be considered, you're right, would be considered as a principal permitted accessory use, except residential second units, which we agree, because that's how our ordinance is structured now, guest houses, and artist studios. And I think their concern with guest houses and artist studios is that they're pretty easily converted to residential uses. So, we had not fully resolved that. We believe that guest houses and artist studios are within the control of the county and should be considered a principally permitted accessory use. I did forget one. Thank goodness, all three of us are here. And that is on voluntary mergers. I think we spoke with the commission about that as well. And the Coastal Commission suggested modifications indicate that all voluntary mergers are subject to an appealable CDP. And the county sought to limit the appealable CDP requirement to only those voluntary mergers that would result in development, a change in development potential. And the commission staff just did not make that change either. So, those were sort of, basically, the ideas that we brought forward to the commission and sought their input on.
Great. For something you hadn't given any thought to, that's wonderful. Thank you very much.
And just to review briefly, all these myriad changes basically derive from the whole concept of a principal permitted use, which is somewhat alien to our approach to zoning, and something which is particular to the Coastal Commission. So, either it's exempt, or it's a principal permitted use, and you only get one, so we hope you like it, and for that, you get, it's a CDP, not appealable. But everything else, then, becomes a non-principle permitted use, which requires a CDP with a hearing, and that's appealable. And so, what happens is, a great number of things that people are used to doing without permits or without appealable permits, all of a sudden, require permits and require permits that can be appealed. And that is potentially, well, not potentially, that would be a financial and time burden that just has not existed, and it is a cause of concern.
Understood. I think we were briefed on that, Howard, that that is the way in which the Coastal Commission is handling other jurisdictions, not just us, so...
So, I'll continue. Also, at the 3rd, on August 3rd, there was the appeal of the Lot X Bean Blossom, single-family residence on the Gaviota Coast, and that project was redesigned in the context of the appeal process to be much less visible and to better address the findings that need to be made about visual, and it was approved by the board. Also, following on that, we had the appeal by Mr. Decker in Montecito, and that was a very interesting appeal for me because of the fact that it pointed out something, which is that if you use FAR as a measure of bulk and scale on a house, you have to be careful how you do it. Because what had happened was that Mr. Decker had not really addressed the bulk and scale of his house, but had simply changed certain space from space that was living space to non-living space. Therefore, it didn't count in the FAR calculation, and his claim was that he had addressed the FAR issue, but the board didn't buy it, and they denied his appeal. And then, finally, and it was a long hearing, it went well into the evening, there were the 10 appeals of NextG permits. And what happened with those was that nine of them were continued until September 21st, and the issue being focusing on visual, which is a key issue as far as our ability to regulate these, the issue came up as to whether or not the equipment boxes could be undergrounded, and whether or not this might address some of the visual issues which are of central concern. And NextG is in the process of addressing those issues, and we will return on September 21st to see the extent to which they have addressed those issues, and the extent to which that makes a difference to the Board of Supervisors on these appeals. There was, in fact, one appeal, which was of a trenching permit, and it became clear that the fiber optic cable which was proposed to be trenched could be placed above ground on existing poles without any permit whatsoever. And given that that was the case, the board decided to approve the NextG appeal to allow them to place the fiber optic cable underground. So, that takes care of the 3rd.
Dr. Russell, a question related to just the sense coming out of that batch of appeals and the process we've been through. I wasn't able to watch the hearing, so I don't know, I don't have a sense of how it was handled. Do you have a feeling that there is pressure to update our telecommunications ordinances that has arisen out of this process? Or, I'm not sure my question is clear, but if...
Yes, sir, it is more than a sense. We have been directed to do so.
Okay. Please continue.
Okay, and then, on the 10th, there were a number of items, and that was the last board hearing for a while, now they're dark, until September 7th, I think, September 7th. And the Redevelopment Agency, which is now part of Planning and Development, purchased a property in Isla Vista for a housing project, and so that's moving forward. We received permission to apply for a Strategic Growth Council Prop 84 grant for Climate Action Strategy and Sustainable Community Projects, so we're very hopeful that we'll get some funding for that. We submitted a report on the grading ordinance changes, which are a result of the Regional Water Quality Control Board's review of our stormwater program, and they wanted to see some changes of definitions to address grading not associated with agriculture, grading not associated with construction, but other kinds of land disturbance which the regional board did not feel was adequately captured by our current ordinance structure. The Sweeney Canyon Winery in Lompoc was approved, and that was a very interesting hearing in the sense that the whole issue of visitors serving commercial and events at wineries came up, and there's quite a diversity of opinion in the San Ines Valley as to whether it's appropriate for those things to take place at wineries. In this case, there was a great deal of support from the Lompoc community, and it was approved. We took our seismic safety and safety element to the board for their consideration, and that was approved, and that's nice to get a big part of our general plan updated so that we're consistent with state law. And we also did a joint report with Public Works and staff from the Regional Water Quality Control Board on the new low-impact development design requirements of projects, and how those will be implemented through the application reviews in PND. And then, the final thing that I wanted to comment on was to follow up on a question that was posed by Commissioner Burrows in the past regarding a potential, something that she had heard regarding the potential for a pathway to join Santa Cedro Road to the Coast Village Road, where there is already a bike path, and Commissioner Burrows expressed interest in knowing anything about that, and also made reference to a letter from Planning and Development to the City of Santa Barbara that might relate to that issue. So, there's three things that I can report on that, I think that will clarify the issue. First of all, we are processing a permit for a path along the west side of Santa Cedro Road from Jamison Lane to Montecito Union School. So, we are doing that, but that's not a path that would connect Santa Cedro Road to Coast Village. There currently is no project that I am aware of for a path to connect Santa Cedro Road to Coast Village Road, other than what may already exist there. So, I checked and did not find anything, there's no project that I'm aware of. And finally, there was, in fact, a letter that was written from the county to Santa Barbara on the EIR for Plan Santa Barbara, and perhaps that is the letter that you're referring to, and basically, the comment is as follows. The Plan Santa Barbara Circulation Element Policy, C1, Reduce Transportation Energy Use, contains implementation action, C1.1, pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, which is identified as a mitigation measure in the draft EIR. And the mitigation measure is improve coordination between city, county, UCSB, SB-CAG, and other South Coast cities and entities to improve and expand regional bike paths and routes that cross jurisdictional boundaries. And so, it's a general mitigation measure, and our comment was, the draft EIR discussion through this mitigation measure does not include or address the above language. The city should include a more detailed discussion of regional bicycle connectivity, focusing on the coast... focusing on the Coast Village Road, North Jamison Corridor, and linkages to Montecito." So it was a kind of a general comment that there needed to be more discussion of regional bicycle connectivity focusing on Coast Village Road, North Jamison Corridor, and linkages to Montecito. So it was not connected to a specific project, it was a general comment on that draft EIR. And that concludes my information for today, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burrows?
Yes. I want to thank you for following up on that question I had. I think the question that some people in Montecito had, and it's one that I have, the bike path is already there, both sides of Jamison. I'm wondering why that found its way as a mitigation, and possible mitigation, in regard to Plan Santa Barbara? How would it be expanded? Why is a bike path even being addressed, and there's already one there, and it's used quite a lot?
Commissioner Burrows, I believe that, I don't specifically know the answer to your question, but I believe that what this was, was a response to a proposal which was very general in Plan Santa Barbara EIR that said, we should look at this regionally and have, and consider inner connectivity. And basically, the staff level said, well, they looked at it, and they said, well, you haven't really talked about this, so what are you talking about? So I don't know that it was necessarily a recommendation that there should be any particular path, but rather a review of the EIR, which basically said, well, you've got a mitigation measure in here, but you didn't really say what you're talking about. So if you're going to have that mitigation measure, you should expand on that and talk about, and they did, in fact, say, linkages to Montecito. So there is that. So I think it was sort of a general comment in reference to a mitigation measure which was not fully detailed, as opposed to a specific recommendation that there needed to be a particular path in a particular location.
Any further questions for the record? Thank you, Dr. Russell. Moving on to our standard agenda, Mr. Villalobos, do you want to read into the record item number one?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Montecito Planning Commission will receive a report on the status of the Westmont College Master Plan.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Not a whole lot to report to you today. Things at Westmont are starting to wind down a bit. All the buildings have been completed, just putting finishing touches on them at this point. I believe the students come back this, this week sometime, and I believe they'll be in a position to start using the new buildings for academic classes this fall. Basically, what we're seeing now is sort of winding down, starting to pull out some of the construction and temporary trailers that are out there, finishing off those areas, doing various site improvements with landscaping, putting in additional tree mitigation, sidewalks, et cetera, for access throughout the campus. And they expect to finish that over the next two months. It'll be a reduced, reduced level of work out there that people will notice. Just as far as traffic goes, for the previous month, obviously with school out, it was reduced traffic than typically see. The cap, if you recall, is for weekdays, or, sorry, for weekends and non-school days is 2650 average daily trips. And they rolled in, for cumulative average, for, as of last month, of 1750, or give or take. So they continue to be well below those limits. I think it'll be interesting to see where the traffic goes once construction's completed and things kind of return to normal, so we'll be sure to keep an eye on that.
Good. Any questions from the commission for Mr. Stone? Thank you very much. Moving on to our second...
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend we take like a five-minute break to allow staff to set up, if you don't mind.
Okay. We'll reconvene in five minutes. Mr. Villalobos, do you want to read that into the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department to consider a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding case number 09ORD14, proposing to amend the existing Montecito Growth Ordinance and extend the program to December 31st, 2030, and certify the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance Amendments and Extension Supplemental EIR 10EIR3, revising 92EIR3 as adequate environmental review for case number 09ORD14 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Ms. Bradbury?
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Holly Bradbury, and I'm a planner with the Long Range Planning Division. I'm also joined by Supervising Planner June Peugeot and Deputy Director Vicki Parker. The presentation today is going to be in three segments. We have the background, the project description, and the environmental review. We anticipate it lasting about 20 minutes. The Montecito Growth Management Ordinance is a programmatic program that applies to the entire Montecito Community Plan area. This slide explains that we are here today to ask the commission to recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the findings, certify the environmental impact report, approve the amendments, and adopt a resolution forwarding the project to the California Coastal Commission. The specifics of the request are shown on page two of your staff report, and we'll also further explain our request at the end of the presentation. The first section is the background and history of the Montecito Growth Management So as this slide shows, the intent of the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance is to pace development and step with available services and resources in the Montecito Planning As you're all aware, there's an operating growth management ordinance in Montecito. The bullet list on the screen outlines the structure of the Montecito Growth Management as it currently exists. The provisions include limiting new residential dwellings to 19 per year, which is a half percent growth rate based on 1989 housing stock. Allocations are based on a competitive point award system, which gives preferences to projects that provide resource protection and limit impacts on public services. The allocations are distributed twice annually. The Montecito Growth Management Ordinance is set to expire on December 31st of this year unless extended, which leaves us with about three months to complete the approval The ordinance also exempts a couple of units, types of units, including affordable housing, residential second units, condominium conversions, and special care facilities. What this slide shows is an overview of the history of the ordinance with important milestones to give a historical perspective. The MGMO was approved in 1991, excuse me, as part of Phase One of a growth management program. Phase Two was the Montecito Community Plan, which was adopted in 1992, and that EIR considered full build-out. The red squares show the extensions and amendments in 1993, 1999, and 2005. The marker at the end here shows the end of the year, and we also have a marker which shows where we are today. So this slide shows where the Growth Management Ordinance fits into the overall development review process. The MGMO is implemented through a growth management overlay in the Montecito Land Use Development Code and in the coastal zoning ordinance, and it's applied to every parcel in the plan area. An applicant for a single-family dwelling or unit must obtain an MGMO allocation prior to applying for MBAR and zoning permit or clearance approval. The allocations are awarded in June and December. The applicant after receiving an allocation has six months to apply for the MBAR. If a zoning permit is not obtained within three years, then that allocation expires, and the applicant would need to apply for a new one. And also in this diagram, we show it in sort of the six steps that an applicant would need to go through and how the MGMO fits into that. Consistency with the general plan is not, those findings are not required as part of the Growth Management Ordinance, but are required at the zoning permit clearance step. So this is our second section, where we're going to explain what we're updating and amending in the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance, so it can continue to serve the community for another 20 years.
Ms. Bradbury, would you like questions as we go? You want us to hold them, do it by section? You want to wait until the end?
Mr. Chair, if we could wait till the end, that would be...
This slide describes what is continuing and what is being amended. We are maintaining the original half a percent growth rate, or the 19 units per year, and are not changing the procedures which include the annual reporting requirement or the system of competitive point awards. What we are doing is modernizing the point categories and expiration criteria, and we're going to be detailing those over the next couple of slides. This slide explains the changes to the expiration criteria. The first bullet describes how the MGMO is being extended to December 31st of 2030, and the second bullet describes how the expiration criteria is being amended and updated. As mentioned before, the purpose of the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance is to keep development in step with available resources and services. And by its terms, the ordinance can only remain in effect as long as public services are not adequate and public health and safety would be jeopardized without the ordinance in place. If improvements are made to the expiration criteria described in this slide, including water supply, fire protection, wastewater disposal, and traffic and circulation, the Board of Supervisors may find that the ordinance is no longer needed and may allow it to expire. Of these categories, water supply, fire protection, and traffic and circulation have been with the MGMO since its approval in 1991, and we are adding sewer infrastructure as a new And also, the MGMO requires annual status reports to the Board of Supervisors, in which staff goes through an analysis of where we stand on all of these issues. And this is how infrastructure is monitored as required in the ordinance. Later in the presentation, we're going to describe how these changes came about through the environmental review process. This slide details the point assignment categories, which we've retained, deleted, or created as part of the project. During the processing of the allocation, each project is awarded points for the categories shown on the screen here, which essentially gives priority to the projects which conserve resources and alleviate strain on public services. And that's particularly important when there are situations where there's more projects than there are allocations. For example, five points are awarded to projects outside of a flood plain, and 20 points would be awarded to projects without mapped habitat areas. Point assignment changes were made both as part of the project description and the environmental review process. 12 of the categories were retained, and of those six were amended. One category was deleted. And there are two new categories. And again, we'll go through how we came to arrive at these categories in the environmental review section of the presentation. So just to clarify other changes and clarifications that were part of the project description, we have clarified that any unassigned allocations in a calendar year do not roll over to the next calendar year. They must be used in that year only. And also, any subsequent permits or zoning clearances must substantially comply with the point categories, or else an applicant would need a new allocation. We've also just updated the ordinance to include the appropriate references. So this is the final section of our presentation where we discuss the environmental review for the project. This slide addresses the environmental review approach and the baseline. The state secret guidelines direct the preparation of a supplement to a previously certified environmental impact report, when a project would have one or more new or substantially increased significant effect as a result of changed circumstances, not discussed in the prior EIR. So what we're doing is this programmatic MGMO document supplements the 1992 Montecito Community Plan EIR. The next few slides will discuss instances where circumstances have changed since 1992, which results in new impacts or an increase in their severity. The Montecito Community Plan EIR baseline is used unless there is identified substantial change in circumstances, in which case baseline is taken from existing conditions in Montecito. This has occurred for greenhouse gas, which was not thoroughly analyzed in the Montecito Community Plan EIR, as this is a new and emerging issue, and also such as the water supply setting has changed. Generally, project impacts under the MGMO amendments and extension are the same as or less than what impacts would be in the absence of a pacing mechanism. So this slide summarizes the impacts where circumstances have changed since 1992. Under Class One, significant unavoidable impacts, we had, they were identified for fire, because an increase in severity was shown by recent wildfires, and also studies show that urban areas in the east side of the plan area and near the beaches or outside of the Montecito Fire Protection District, five-minute response time. Also for traffic, a consultant was retained which completed a traffic study, which updated the impacted roadways since 1992. Also wastewater disposable, disposal was significant, as Montecito Sanitary District infrastructure would need to be expanded in order to serve planned build-out under the Montecito Community Plan land uses. So Class Two, significant but mitigable impacts, were identified for multimodal transport, which refers to bicycle and pedestrian safety impacts which would result under build-out. Greenhouse gas emissions, as this is a new topic, which was not evaluated in the Montecito Community Plan EIR. Household emissions are cumulatively significant. And also underwater supply, in the 1992 Montecito Community Plan PIR, the arrival of state water was thought to be mitigated by the addition of state water project to the Montecito Water District's portfolio. Montecito began receiving the state water in 1998. However, the recent Delta smell court decision and statewide drought have significantly lowered the amount of water that is being allocated statewide from the state water project, and this has been clear in recent years, and also affects their future delivery projections. So what this slide shows is the mitigations which resulted from the impacts in the previous slide. The first column shows the issue area, the second column shows what is the new mitigations, and the third column shows what the residual impact would be. On this slide, it's important to note that the need for the MGMO to protect health and safety does remain, because fire, traffic, and sewer residual impacts do remain significant. So we're just going to go through each mitigation area real quickly here. So new mitigations for fire include additional point criteria for projects located outside the very high fire and high fire zones, and projects located below hydraulic grade lines. The expiration criteria was updated to include five-minute urban area response time and/or a third fire station. And another mitigation includes that any Montecito Community Plan updates in the future would include firewise building and landscaping guidelines. For traffic, the point and expiration criteria was amended to reflect what the traffic consultant found were impacted roadways and intersections. Also, monitoring of Highway 101 would be required as part of that annual report, and we would need to do a new traffic study upon those completions to assess how they would have affected circulation in the community. The reclassification of Sheffield Drive, all way stop signs and traffic lights were consistent with the Montecito Community Plan, and widening impacted roadway segments from two lanes to three or four lanes, again, were consistent with the community plan. So the only mitigation under sewer was for expiration, that the ordinance could expire if infrastructure was expanded to serve build-out under existing Montecito Community Plan land uses. So now we move on to the significant but mitigable impacts, for bicyc- For bicycle and pedestrian impacts, a point criteria was amended to include road right-of-way legalization and additional points for the dedication of trails. Greenhouse gas emissions are mitigated through requiring projects to reduce their operational greenhouse gas emissions at the project level, and that would be built into their zoning clearance or permit. Underwater supply, as part of the monitoring, we would continue to look at the state water project situation, and if the demand exceeded water supply, then the number of yearly allocations could be reduced by the Board of Supervisors. Point criteria awards were also amended to include that a Montecito Water District's certification and water conservation plan would be required if you wanted to earn those points at submittal of your MGMO. And also, all projects subject to the MGMO would need to submit a water conservation plan and their Montecito Water District's certificate of availability at the time they submit for their land use permit or zoning clearance. And again, the project must also comply with their point assignment categories, which we just discussed a few slides ago. And any future Montecito Community Plan updates would need to include a review of an indoor/outdoor water conservation plan. Okay, so the next step in this process is that we are tentatively scheduled to go before the Board of Supervisors for a decision on the project on October 5th. For the portions of the project in the coastal zone, Coastal Commission staff has advised us that a minor amendment to the local coastal plan may be required, which could be processed prior to the MGMO expiration. So this concludes our presentation. We're just going to end with a staff recommendation here, which is to recommend that the Board of Supervisors make the appropriate findings, certify the final supplemental EIR, recommend that the Board approve the amendments revising and extending the MGMO, and adopting a resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors approve and forward the project to the California Coastal Commission. And again, this is on page 2 of your staff report, if you wanted to take a closer look or had any questions. So this would conclude our presentation. Please let any of us know if you have any questions whatsoever, and thank you.
Does the Commission want to take any public comment now, or you want to ask questions first?
Oh, sure.
We can do it either way. Let's take public comment, and then we'll come to the Commission for questions and whatnot. So I have two speaker slips. The first one is from Victoria Green, Montecito Association.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Victoria Green, on behalf of the Montecito Association. First of all, I wanted to thank staff for moving this project forward. I think they've done it in a real timely fashion, and we appreciate that. This is a project that the Association has actively asked the county to tackle, because we do believe that during the 20 years that the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance has been in effect, it has really been an effective tool in pacing development, consistent with resource and infrastructure constraints. We believe that extension of the ordinance is necessary and appropriate, in fact, critical in light of the existing and projected constraints that staff described to you today, and they've analyzed in the supplemental EIR. So we're here today, wholeheartedly supporting extension of the ordinance, and ask that your Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors extend this ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Freddie, I believe it's Romero, from Concerned Chumash. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and fellow Commissioners. Yeah, I just had a couple of statements to make in regards to this particular document. I have reviewed the document, and under the document, there wasn't a whole lot of talk about cultural resources. There was mention about preserving in place when identified cultural resources were located within a project. As I read on in the document, it then went straight to a Phase 3 mitigation process, which actually is not the best choice to use. And so, the other things that I found in this document is that there was a lack of communication with native people, native tribes, in terms of consultation, and also there weren't any specifics in dealing with cultural resources once they were discovered. Now, I know CEQA has certain guidelines that you're required to follow, but there was nothing specific in your plan, and so that's what I'm here to address today, is why are there no changes to cultural resources, or no updating of the information within cultural resources? Because this document didn't specifically deal with that, which I feel, given the area of Montecito, there is some relatively sensitive areas located within the boundaries of your city. So those are issues that I would like to see addressed. I don't think that this particular document is ready to be approved without some type of consultation or meaningful dialogue between the native community and here in Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Let's see, I think I'll let staff, Mr. Yates perhaps, if you want to respond to the comments that were offered. I mean, I think I know part of the answer, but I'd rather hear it from you. Whoever wants to take it.
His Chair overall and Commissioners, the document that has been circulated as Ms. Bradbury discussed in her presentation is a supplemental EIR. So what that means is that this document, along with the original 1992 EIR for the Montecito Community Plan, comprised the environmental analysis for the project. The 1992 EIR discussed cultural resources and found Class 2 impacts for archaeology. We did not find any change in circumstances between that discussion and analysis and today, because archaeology in 20 years, you know, doesn't change that fast. So we, in that case, carry forward the classification and the findings of the 1992 EIR, and that becomes part of the overall finalized analysis for the project. So we didn't add new information, because we didn't find new information.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, yeah, Ms. Pujol has described it pretty accurately. I mean, a supplemental EIR is indeed a supplemental. It depends, it's based on the original analysis that was done in 92. Unless there's an increase in the severity of the impacts based on, as Ms. Pujol said, a change in circumstances or a change in the project, then that analysis, that original analysis, is considered adequate under CEQA. There also is another level of review possible. I mean, if cultural resources are identified at the permitting stage, then it's possible that some of the provisions that Mr. Aradano referred to in the CEQA guidelines would then apply to that project. So that's essentially the level normally where the CEQA cultural resources analysis is done, and that was considered in the 92 EIR.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? I guess not. Ms. Burrows?
So that I understand this, so the analysis in the 1992 EIR was incorporated into this, into the current one, or not incorporated because no new information was found?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Burrows, could you repeat the question?
Yes.
Step into the mic a little bit more there.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand the process. Because the issue of cultural resources was addressed in the 1992 document, and nothing new was found, so we would find nothing here concerning the cultural resources. The other one would stand, right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Burrows, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'll bring it, there are no other comments from the public. I'll bring it back to the Commission for questions to be directed to the staff. Any questions from the Commission? Mr. Idelson?
Yeah, I wanted to see if I could get some terms and some of the findings clarified for me. First of all, when we say roads are impacted or measurable traffic, which roads are impacted, and what does the term measurable traffic mean? I have a few other questions too, but I'll stop.
Ms. Commissioner Idelson, Holly Bradbury will give you some information here in a minute. I think she has something on the overhead projection. But basically, I believe what you're referring to is the language in the draft ordinance, the point assignment criteria. Is that what you're speaking to? Okay. So do you have something on that, Holly? Let me just preface a little bit. I think this slide is still good, but in the draft ordinance, what we're saying is if you have your required access for your site, for your new house, that is abutting one of the roadways that we found an impact to in the environmental analysis, then you would not be able to get points, point assignments, for that category when you're applying for your allocation. So I think Holly can go over the list of what those roadways and intersections are with you. So one of the things to understand is when you apply for a growth management allocation, you have to provide documentation about whether or not you can qualify for all the different point categories that are in the ordinance. And then we total up the points, and the allocations go first to the highest point-getters. So if you were on a roadway that was, concluded that it was going to be an impacted roadway, then you would not be able to get those points. You may be able to get points in other categories, but you wouldn't be able to get those points.
And Mr. Chair, Commissioner Idelson, those roadways are listed in Section 7.2.3 of the Attachment C, and those include North Jamison Lane, Olive Mill Road, Sheffield Drive between Jalinda and Birmingham Wood Drive, and East Valley Road between Cota and Picacho Lane. And the number of points that you would get if you did not direct any vehicle or access onto those roadways would be 20 points. And we erased, the original Montecito Growth Management Ordinance had Hot Springs Road, which we have removed, because our traffic study did not show that it was an impacted roadway. And also, changed the sections on East Valley Road from between Sandy Cedar and Sheffield to between Cota and Picacho Lanes. Oh, they also erased Sandy Cedar Road south of East Valley and replaced that with Sheffield Drive between Jalinda and Birmingham Wood Drive.
Okay, I have a question then. On this transportation, you have here the capacity of Olive Mill Road has exceeded between Hot Springs and Olive Mill Lane, but not between Olive Mill Lane and North Jamison.
Mr. Chair, if you could just give us one second?
Certainly.
We were going to just pull up a map.
Do you want to take a break, or?
We just need a couple of moments.
Okay.
While Ms. Bradbury is pulling that up, I would just note that in the supplemental EIR, in the discussion under transportation and circulation, and the traffic study that was done by our consultant, Fair and Peers, there was one identified segment, not the entire roadway, but one identified segment along Olive Mill that would exceed acceptable capacity in the plan. So that's the, not the entire roadway, it's just one portion of the roadway that fell into that unacceptable category. It'd be helpful if we had a little bit clarification. My understanding is that your question is why isn't Olive Mill included?
Yes.
Yeah. It's because only that one segment of Olive Mill was found to exceed acceptable capacities.
Then the capacity's different for that region? I mean, it doesn't, it kind of didn't make sense to me, but...
It's a result of the traffic analysis? Can you point out on the map that section we're talking about?
We need Olive Mill between Olive Mill Lane and Hot Springs.
I'm just going to jump in and comment while they're scuffling here, because I kind of am really familiar with that little segment that we're talking about. And I don't know, you know, because I don't understand all of this traffic analysis stuff, but it would be my guess, Mr. Idelson or Chair, that that particular segment gets impacted because a lot of people just consistently, when you get hung up at the corner of Olive Mill and Coast Valley Road, sometimes you actually can't get where you're going. This is my personal experience and observation. So what I'll do is go ahead and turn up, turn into Olive Mill Lane, turn around, and come back down to Coast Village Road. So that little segment, in my personal observation anyway, gets used more than the segment of Olive Mill Lane above, I mean, Olive Mill Road above Olive Mill Lane. It's kind of whole, all part of the old coast highway problems that we have. It's just a natural, it's the only way you can go, right there.
But the evaluations were done by an independent measuring company?
Yes, Commissioner Idelson, they were done by our traffic consultants called Fair and Peers, an outside consultant, who performed a traffic study in preparation for our environmental review and guided us along the way in determining our conclusions.
Mr. Idelson, just to ask a supplemental question to that.
Yeah, I'm okay on that one. I have some others I can go to, but if you have...
Let me just follow up on that though. At what point will additional traffic studies be done?
Mr. Chair, that would be upon the completion of the Highway 101 improvements. Mr. Chair, that would be upon the completion of the Highway 101 improvements.
So we'll have to wait for that completion before we would do an additional traffic study? Is that correct?
Ms. Bradbury is referring to some of the direction that we have included into the new revised draft for the Growth Management Ordinance, and that's based on some of the findings that the traffic consultant, Fair and Peers, advised us to, so we've included that language. That doesn't mean that no traffic study will be done between now and then. I mean, clearly there'll be projects along the way that will require project-level and communal-level traffic analysis in the area. And, you know, Public Works with their programming and funding will respond to requirements for traffic information as their budget and their work programs allow.
I guess the question that I'm asking is, granted that we have Highway 101 going on, as new projects come forward and traffic information is developed, how does that information make its way into this document?
Very good question, I can attempt to answer that. One other thing that we have built into the ordinance is an annual report to the Board of Supervisors on the statuses, status of resources and constraints. So what we do every year is we take a look at, contact Public Works, as a matter of fact, some of this is a shared responsibility with Public Works, and we take a look at any new traffic data, traffic information, traffic reports, project-level traffic information, Caltrans project information, and we accumulate that and we make interim reports to the Board of Supervisors.
As a follow-on, when you do that, would that information then make the laundry list that you had of impacted roadways and intersections, does that data then become an integral part of this document?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, again, a very good question. There are provisions in the ordinance, and we can point them out to you by number in a minute if you'd like, but there are provisions in the ordinance that say that if we get to a point where traffic impact levels substantially go up or substantially go down, that's good reason and good cause for the Board of Supervisors to consider whether amendments to the Growth Management Ordinance need to be made. And, for example, not in the area of traffic, but in the area of water, I believe we have done that in the past. Some of the intervening amendments to the Growth Management Ordinance in the last 20 years did some adjustments along the way based on the status of resources and constraints, and we would continue to do that. So if, for example, all the projected traffic impacts went away, Highway 1 was done and all the intersection improvements were done, or for some other reason the impacts went away, that would be reason for the Board of Supervisors to consider whether or not traffic is a constraint anymore, and they would need to make the decision at that time. We would alert them in our annual reports that they, we would recommend that if that occurred, that they would consider that. If the reverse was true, there's also a provision in the ordinance that would allow the Board to temporarily reduce the number of allocations a year if, for some reason, some very serious impact in terms of traffic or, you know, major road was cut off or something like that, they could consider adjusting the number of allocations a year to match.
The thing, Mr. Idelson, I apologize here, but the thing that I want to make sure is that in the report, that the roadways that are considered and the intersections that are considered is not limited to the items that are listed in this supplemental EIR, that it is in fact the entire community that's taken into account in that update.
Okay. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, one thing I would advise is that the language you see in the draft ordinance is the requested proposed amendment, and it is specific right now. What we have done in the past is where that language needed to be changed, to be updated, to adjust for some of those things, we actually go back to the Board with kind of a, you know, focused amendment to the ordinance. So that's what would need to occur in that case. We would need to come back to the Planning Commission and show you the proposed change in our findings, and then we would need to go back to the Board and ask them to formally change the amendment.
Okay, Mr. Idelson?
Let me give you my three areas that I need clarification on, and then I'll back off. Away and see how your response is. First of all, on the, okay, the Growth Management is said to, the concern is said to expire on the sewage, when the sewage capacity is up, when it's sufficient. That issue I need some discussion on. Another one is, on pages 10, 11, 12, the new fire station will release the fire issue, and that will be released, and I don't think it specified that the fire station had to be on the east end, even though the east end, the response time is, I guess, in question about the five-minute. The other item is, on the water, we have this Ordinance 89 that was, when was that, in 07 or whenever it was? And it made a clear statement that the 5,700 acre feet was 600 acre feet over the ability to serve, just a year or so ago. And now it's a mitigated impact. And so it's like, we didn't have the water, now we do have the water, or we're not using the water, and so if you could help me on that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Idelson, thank you for your questions and comments. The sewage infrastructure is discussed in the EIR, and essentially, in order for the Montecito Community Plan development potential to be realized, there would need to be expanded pipes and pump stations put in at specific locations, which are not there now. And one of the significance criterias is the expansion of sewage infrastructure. And that would be done on a project-by-project level by the applicant.
Could it not be done by the district as a whole?
It could be, it would be very expensive. They've recently done a capital improvement program to basically rehabilitate all of the pipes that they do have and make everything in working order that serves the community now.
Okay.
And then with regard to number two, you're correct, the new fire station is not specified as being in the east end. The Montecito Fire Protection District is currently looking at developing one in the east end, and perhaps we could add language specifying that. That would be, it would need to serve areas which are currently outside of the response time. And with regard to number three, Ordinance 89 and 90, we did work closely with the Montecito Water District, and they did provide figures that have shown that they are able to meet, through conservation imposed by those ordinances, they're able to lower their demand. Our water section goes through sort of an analysis of what the demand would be with the 20% mandated reduction that is also being imposed at the state level. So between Ordinance 89 and 90 and the state-required 20% reduction, the Montecito Water District is closer to their supply meeting demand than they were when that ordinance was passed.
And Commissioners, just in summary of that discussion, I would just point out that really what this does is we analyzed potential resource constraints and public service constraints in the supplemental EIR. And that helped us identify what constraints in the community existed that basically support carrying forward the Growth Management Ordinance. So then we take that information and we incorporate it into the Growth Management Ordinance in several ways. In the findings, in the point assessment criteria, and in the criteria that tells us at what point is the Growth Management Ordinance no longer required, which by the way is a key component of any Growth Management Ordinance, that we have that kind of expiration criteria. So on page C14, which is the draft ordinance amendment, and also the second to the last page of that ordinance, there's a section on expiration. And what Commissioner Idelson is referring to is the list of items that if they were all brought into balance in the community, all of them, not one or the other, then that would be the time for the Growth Management Ordinance to expire. And that's what we've been talking about in this discussion right now.
Other questions from other Commissioners?
Oh, I mean like general, Mr.?
Two staff. Yes.
Oh, okay, great, okay, I didn't know there were so many.
Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. Before we leave traffic, on the new mitigation summary under traffic, you say reclassify Sheffield Drive. What does that mean?
The traffic, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Burrows, the traffic report that we had prepared by Fair and Peers listed that as one of the mitigation measures in order to alleviate some of the traffic constraints. And essentially...
Well, what is reclassify it to?
Oh, I'm sorry. Don't like to say that.
Chair overall and Commissioners, Ms. Bradbury is correct. These mitigation measures, directions basically, came out of our work with our traffic consultant. Several of the mitigation measures that resulted from this supplemental EIR were folded into the actual draft ordinance itself because they lended themselves to being additions to new point categories and things like that. There are a few that are standalone or general mitigation measures, and the one that you're referring to is one of those. It's a general mitigation measure in the supplemental EIR that says that the county should consider a reclassification of that roadway. What that means is, if you recall, in our Montecito Community Plan, we have a list of roads, and we give them titles and names depending on their function. Some are called primary, some are called secondary. Right now Sheffield is called a secondary roadway, and the general mitigation measure in our supplement says that we should consider at some point during this lifespan of this project, we should consider whether or not it's more appropriate to rename it as a primary roadway. That would take an amendment to the Montecito Community Plan if that occurred.
What is the significance of reclassifying it? What does that mean?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, in our circulation section of the Montecito Community Plan, it identifies different kinds of roads, as I mentioned, their function. It also identifies the amount of traffic each of those roadways handles, and gives the design capacity, the policy capacity, the acceptable capacity, all sorts of traffic numbers that go along with what should describe that roadway. So what this mitigation measure is saying is if improvements overall do not reduce the amount of congestion that we would expect on Sheffield with this program and background traffic and whatnot, then, and we see, you know, traffic on Sheffield that exceeds what it's described as, which is a secondary roadway, we should consider reclassifying it to something that more appropriately describes what it's actually doing. And all of those details are in the Montecito Community Plan under the circulation chapter.
Ms. Pujol, what I'm asking is, okay, we reclassify it from secondary to primary. That raises the level of the amount of traffic that's authorized on that roadway. But as a practical matter, all you did is change the name. It doesn't alleviate the traffic. Am I mistaken?
What, you are generally correct. What it would mean though is that would be the time, for at least that roadway, where we would do a new comprehensive analysis and traffic study of traffic in that area of Montecito. And so out of that would come, yes, the proposal to change the classification of the roadway, but also a detailed understanding of exactly how that roadway is functioning, why the traffic is going over its capacity, if there's any other mechanism that we haven't thought of in this document that could potentially assist in keeping that within the current, basically, target traffic numbers and things like that, and if there's any other alternatives. And it would give you a comprehensive review of exactly what's happening on that roadway segment. And yes, if it did go from a secondary to a primary, that would then increase those numbers, which would ease the ability for that road to, in theory at least, accept more trips. But there are other things that may also occur that could go along with that study.
Okay, I have to ask the obvious question. How would reclassifying it, studying it, how does that increase the capacity of the road?
In reality or on paper?
Well...
Well, there's two different things.
Right. It would trigger a couple of things. First of all, it would trigger our Public Works Department helping us study that road to see if there were friction factors or impediments or anything else that they would need to start working into their work plans to make that road operate more smoothly with the higher projected numbers. And it would take a look at what the Montecito Community Plan build out, if there was proposed additional build out in that area. It would also tell us whether or not the build out that we approved for the Montecito Community Plan could actually occur on that roadway without those improvements, and it would probably have some effect on being able to build out, you know, to plan in that area.
Okay. Ms. Burrows?
Does the classification of a roadway, it's either primary or secondary, impact the amount of funding that is used for maintenance of that road?
That is an excellent question. I believe I would need some help from Public Works to respond to that. I'm getting the messages that we're not aware that it would do that. We haven't seen it do that, but we could check, but we don't think it does.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Burrows, I think one answer to the question is what Ms. Pujol mentioned earlier, which is that Public Works has a work plan, and they have certain priorities and there's work plans, and they have different priorities for primary roads and secondary roads. So I think practically, there may not be an ordinance or a community plan directive to Public Works to treat them differently, but I think essentially they do treat them differently and have different priorities for them. In their work plans, I'm sorry.
It makes all the sense in the world that a primary road would receive more upkeep than a secondary road, whether or not there is a specific funding channel for that. So I suppose it would be a priority from Public Works? Is that what, yeah?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Burrows, exactly. I don't think anyone here can answer for Public Works what their priority and what their work plan is for primary roads, but we could probably get back to you on that issue. issue.
If I might just add to Ms. Burrows' comments, it seems to me that the reclassification in and of itself is not a mitigation. It's a flag that work needs to be done, and if work gets done that increases the capacity of the roadway, then perhaps a reclassification is warranted. But to reclassify it, just to change the number, seems to me to be a, unless I'm misunderstanding the process, seems to me to be a, we're just playing some kind of a shell game, so. Okay, any other questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, I have a few questions, but I've got a couple of comments.
Ms. Gottstanker?
Okay. So, first of all, I just really, having been around since the very beginning of this, it was really interesting for me to actually see this update in the environmental documents, you know, to kind of get from where we were to now is, you know, something that I think the community's been interested in, and I really, really appreciated having this document. And then I just also wanted to acknowledge the staff planner, Ms. Pujo, who has also been on this project since 1985, and her consistency and commitment to the community of Montecito, at least on my part, is really appreciated, Ms. Pujo. Thank you for that. And thank you for the county being wise enough to have her continue through for the last 25 years. So, those are my comments then. The questions that I am going to ask aren't specific to the growth management ordinance, they're just some questions that kind of came up for me as I was going through the document, so they're not like earthshaking and certainly are not intended to change the work that's been done. And one of them is just a correction that exists on, in section Environmental Impacts 4.1, the T fire actually happened on November 13th, 2008, not December 2008. And I think that's, it's kind of important from a legal standpoint of view as to what comes down the line for the property owners in that area, that all documents correctly reflect when that fire actually impacted the community. So, then, the only other questions I have were just things that kind of came to mind. On page 4-49, we refer to Sycamore Canyon, access is now hampered in the Sycamore Canyon area. Do we have any, I know that's under private jurisdiction, the repair of that now, but it ongoingly becomes an issue for the west end of Montecito as to when that Sycamore Canyon is going to get open? Do we have any idea? Does the county have any communication? Because the community doesn't, and it comes up all the time. And it does absolutely impact traffic flow, having that not only in the, when a fire happens or any other emergency happens, but, you know, it really impacts the people on Barker Pass and Sycamore Canyon, that whole area, to having to keep rerouting down, all the way down to Milpiss Street, essentially. So, do we know? Do we have any idea?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gottstanker, I don't have any update information for you. I would be glad to try to check a little further and get back to you on it following the hearing.
Okay, great. That's great. Yeah, because I know when you go on, if you go on Google Earth, you can see that it's happening, but, but from, you can't actually get in there to actually see how it, the project is moving along. So, that would be of interest, okay? And then, on page 4-57, when we're talking about historical resources, I don't quite understand the difference between, or if there is a difference. We talk about the San Ysidro adobe, we talk about the Hosmer adobe, we talk about the Juan Hosmer adobe, and there's like commas between theirs. What are we actually talking about there? Are we talking about the Hosmer adobe, or are there more that we're talking about there? And are we just not clear what the name of the place where we're talking about?
What page is it on?
It's dash four, 4-57. And it talks about the Stedman Estate, AKA Casa de Horas, nationally registered. And then we, then we start talking about these different ways of naming adobes. So, I'm not quite sure, I mean, I think that should be really clear because it is, they are historically, you know, as to what we're actually referring to there.
Commissioner Gottstanker, we'll follow up and we'll make that correction. We actually had two comments when we were going through the circulation for the SEIR. I believe one was, might have been from the Montecito Association.
Yeah.
And another from an internal staff person who acknowledges some of these, so we'll go back and we'll just make sure it's got the correct terminology.
Okay, great, okay. And then this is, this is, let's see if that's most of my generic, yeah, that's all then. On, on page, this is back to traffic, on page 4-90, we say, Santa Barbara County has stated most, has established LOSB as a minimum accepted level for service on road segments with a couple of exceptions, and then we've got the list of exceptions. I don't remember why we made those exceptions to those roads to allow for LOSC to be acceptable instead of LOSB. So, June, maybe, you're young enough to have your memory bank still intact, mine's fading.
Most of it, anyway. My recollection is that those roads were already operating above B, so we recognized that in the plan.
Oh, that they already were at, at LOSC?
Correct.
And so, there was no way that we could classify them because they were already over the line?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I have a, just a few questions. I, too, would like to echo the comments of saying thank you for the expeditious job of getting this prepared. It is a valuable tool to the community. And any comments that I might have to the contrary, they're, they're not intended to be, we're trying to perfect the document, not to be critical of it. In the slides that you presented, on page, I just want one clarification, on slide number 13, the very first thing you say, clarification that any unassigned allocations may carry over to the next cycle of the same calendar, same calendar year only. I did not have time to read and double-check that. I just want to make absolutely clear, it's calendar year, it's not, it's not second half of one year to first half of the next year.
Mr. Chair, that's absolutely correct. It's within the same allocation calendar year, and that was always the intent of the ordinance. If you recall, we have two distribution cycles. One is in December and one is in June. So, the 19 units a year that are in the overall ordinance are split up, so nine allocations are granted in the first six months and 10 allocations in the second, might be the reverse, I'm not sure, but it comes out to 19 a year. So, that same 19 in the calendar year is what we are limiting the allocations to. So, if you have carryovers from December, you can carry those over until June, but, excuse me, if you have carryovers in June, you can carry those over to December, but in one calendar year, you can't go past the 19.
Let's see, on the impact summary and then the new mitigation summary pages of your slide presentation, I did have a couple of things that I wanted to discuss. One is the water aspect, two as, two, two parts of that. This was the only portion in the reading that I did that I picked up where the Board of Supervisors could cut the allocation to a quarter percent from a half percent. In Ms. Pujo's presentation, you indicated that applied across the board in the mitigations, but I only read it related to water. So, I want to, I'd just like to have you reassure me that in fact that authority exists across all the, all the categories.
We're scanning the ordinance to get the section for you, but that is the way that the ordinance is structured. Are you referring to in the supplemental EIR itself? That's the only place that we pulled up reference to that?
It was someplace in my, in my reading of the staff report.
Somewhere along your travels.
Yeah. You don't need to find it for me now, I just ask you to verify that it is there, if it is not, to correct it. And then, also related, you know what, I'm going to come back to the water in just a second because it relates, relates to another issue. On the fire department, the fire threat, you talk about the expiration if the response time is under five minutes. That seems to me to be, I'm glad that the response time is five minutes or less. I'm not sure that that meets the intent in terms of controlling where growth takes place and the health and safety of the community. So, I just, I don't know how to change it, but it seems like it is one metric and only one metric that we're using as it relates to fire, and I think of places where, where...
Don't get me started.
Where Commissioner Gottstanker lives, that the access time might be under five minutes, but is the water supply adequate and a variety of things. I just, it, it feels to me like to expunge the fire threat simply based on a response time is a too-limited definition, and maybe I'm not reading it correctly, but Commissioner Gottstanker?
Yeah, well, yeah, I didn't go into this because it was recommended that I not, but you brought it up and put it on the table. You know, one of the things, when I really look at the build, the potential of build out, which is what all of this is based on, you know, we continue to grant that there is build-out availability above the high fire line and on very steep slopes, and it's just something that, you know, I didn't bring it up earlier, but I think, now we're in a public forum, you know, I think it's something that the community really needs to, in conjunction with the fire department and the water district and the county, we really need to really look at continuing to allow build-out where there are no roads, where there, as the, as the fire, you know, as the state fire requirements come up, anything that's, that's built in the hillsides in Montecito is now going to require a 20-foot road. You know, so then, so then the impact to that is all the grading that has to happen. There's just so many impacts to that area, and I know the growth management ordinance isn't the place necessarily to be able to get at, you know, take an amendment to the community plan, but I do think in future long-range planning, it is really something that needs to be dealt with, and I, you know, I know that the, the fire department, I mean, we've been in discussions for a year about this, is like, how do we really deal with this wildland urban interface as people want to build where they've got views of the ocean and they want to be on big acreages and, you know, we're seeing it in Gaviota, but this is like an area in Montecito, it is like, there are no resources there, none. You know, I mean, we can't, in the T fire area, we've got, you know, 13 families that still can't even start their rebuilding process because the resources aren't there. The resources aren't there for them to rebuild what they already have, you know. A $1.5 million road to serve 13 families, that has to be, the resources have to come from the homeowners, it's just unworkable. And yet, we still base our numbers as total build-out is including a number that are up there that may or may not ever get built on, but we allow for the potential of that. And I, I just think it's something inside of our long-range planning conversations we really need to look at.
Thank you. Mr. Idelson?
Yeah, I have two questions. One of them is probably of a legal nature, but it's a beautiful document and all, and assuming that we get this approved by the Board of Supervisors, what risk do we have of, of having this expire before 2030? What I'm looking at is if these mitigating issues start getting resolved or lawsuits against this document, could you, could you help me out with that? Is that? The question is, what is our risk of losing this document before the 20 years are up? Or at least, the document will be here, but in other words, the constraints that are, we have here to protect the community? Is there a risk? Maybe there's no risk?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I don't think that I can actually give you a risk analysis necessarily for it, but remember that those constraints need to be resolved, all of them, before the Board would take action to expire the growth management ordinance. Also, remember that one of the things we have done with this document is we have analyzed a 20-year lifespan. So, we will monitor along the way, we will keep track of resources and constraints, but in terms of this document, we have looked, you know, far enough ahead so that we have adequate environmental review for the full timeframe that we are recommending on the extension. So, for example, unless some major change, either in an increase or decrease of service constraints come along, we would rely on this document for that time period without having to go back and do a new environmental review. What happened this time, by the way, is, last time around, we also had a document that was, an environmental document that was good for 20 years. That's why we did new SEQA review this time. So, we're looking ahead to 2030 and projecting as best we can with this environmental document what we expect to occur. So, the only thing we have to watch for in between are major changes in the community in terms of resources and constraints that may occur, and we will need to discuss those at the Board, because watching and monitoring resources and constraints is, in fact, a way to protect the growth management ordinance, because it's our duty under growth management law to do that. So, that's about the best I can provide you, but you see the list of resources and constraints and what would need to be accomplished, we think, in order to bring those in balance. That's, it's a, it's a lot.
But I look at the three special districts, the fire, the water, the sanitary, and I, I just become surprised really at the water being a Class II impact when the other two are Class I's, but it concerns me that, gosh, if they, if they build out the sanitary, then that's no longer an impact. They do the fire department, gets the five-minute response, no longer an impact on, on the document, and then we're talking waters, a Class II? You know, kind of, it concerns me.
I, I believe it's best to do a little bit of separation in your mind between what we call the impact level in the SEIR and what we have as the list of constraints that need to be resolved. Water is Class II because in several in-depth conversations and review of materials from the water district, there are, in it, steps and feasible ways to actually get to a point where we don't have a constraint on water service anymore. Some impact areas, like traffic, even with specific improvements that we have identified, we still feel there's a residual impact that can't be dealt with. So, that's in terms of SEQA, but once you do that and you move over to the growth management ordinance and identify its constraints, I mean, because it's Class II doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to... I mean, because it's Class II doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to be easier. It means it's a little more foreseeable about what we need to do. So I don't know if, you know, we will get that water situation resolved in five years, 10 years, 15 years, or 20 years. But because it's Class II doesn't mean we think it's automatically simpler and faster. It means that it's more foreseeable what we need to do.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Idelson, just a brief response about the 20-year period and ensuring that this is still adequate. SEQA is only triggered by a decision, and this decision is, would be the Board's decision to adopt a new growth management ordinance. There's no requirement when there's changed circumstances to amend or revise a SEQA document unless there's an actual decision point. So the only decision point where the SEQA document would have to be revised, updated, supplemented, would be if there's a decision somewhere along the line to amend the growth management ordinance. And if the amendment is very minor, then that probably would only require an addendum, which is a very short document. So there is no expiration date for EIRs. And there is however, for the growth management ordinance, right? But in the meantime, somebody's statute, the statute of limitations is set by law for essentially 30 days for the SEQA document. They have to let it go within 30 days. On the growth management ordinance, they have a little bit more time, but still they have to challenge the ordinance itself. Later on down the line, unless again, there's a revision or amendment, there's no opportunity for somebody to challenge it.
Let's see, I have a few remaining comments on the new mitigation summary. Under traffic, you have as mitigation measures, you have hallway stops or traffic lights, and you say that they're consistent with the Montecito community plan. I suppose this is in the eye of the holder, but I don't feel that traffic lights are consistent with the semi-rural character of Montecito. So I don't, while in act of desperation, I suppose we could put in more signal lights. It would be certainly my hope that we could avoid that. And the next mitigation that you have, the widening of roadways, which are designated in our community plan as a community resource, I think widening them from two lanes to three or four lanes. I'm not sure where you would do that, and it certainly would have a significant impact on the character of the community. So again, I'm not sure that that belongs in here as a viable mitigation measure. Moving down to the water supply issue, and here I'm going to get a little bit philosophical. I have a significant problem with, our role is to plan and try and think out a little bit. You have a provision in here, from the time somebody gets an allocation to the time they have to pull their permit, there's a three-year period. This only, as I understand it, only relates to residential. We have commercial, we have the Gunner project, we have the Miramar project. We happen to have been fortunate the last couple, maybe fortunate is a very poor choice of words. We've had a down economy, so development has fallen through the floor. Those projects have been put on hold, I think primarily for financial reasons. But we have a tail out there. We have some level of built-up demand. I'm not sure that we adequately have built into our process a mechanism that takes into account what we've already authorized. And so as we look at, as somebody comes in with an application and you evaluate the point system and all that, it doesn't, it may be there, but to me, it doesn't feel like we have an adequate grasp in this process of what that already authorized demand might do to the supply. And I'm thinking in particular water, but it applies across the board to traffic and fire and all the other resources. So I don't know where or how we get that factored in here. Maybe it's there and I've missed it, but it is, for me, it's a genuine concern. So that relates to the one part of the water. The other, which is also, I think, a little bit on the philosophical side, you have, what was it, 89 and 90, those were provisions to limit the amount of water for new applications. It doesn't, they reserve the right to cut people off. I mean, I remember having the discussion with the water district. If this doesn't work, if these measures don't work, if we don't find additional water supplies, people keep on using more than they need to. And apparently, the community has done a pretty good job of responding to that reality and the price sensitivity to the brackets that we have. But in a desperate situation, the water district reserved the right to cut water off. Well, I think there's a legitimate question. You have a parcel that has no development on it, and you have another parcel where people have been living there for 20 years, and now suddenly you're going to tell the people who've been living there for 20 years, you can't have the water, but the new entity gets to build. I mean, it's an awkward trade-off. But I am concerned about the water situation. I'd like to see a mechanism where we have an ability to ratchet up the classification over the life of this document as circumstances warrant it. So, let's see. I want some clarification from you, Ms. Bradbury, related to the Board of Supervisors. Do they have to approve, what happens if they don't approve this by 1231 and they were to approve it on January 15th of 2011? What's the consequence of that?
Yes, I'll take this one. Thank you for all those comments, and actually, I could speak to a couple of those in a minute, too. In terms of schedule and deadlines, as you all are aware, the ordinance itself states December 31st, 2010 is the current expiration date. So what we are accomplishing through this hearing, going to the Board and whatnot, is to have a new expiration date and basically a renewed ordinance in place by that time. The requirements are going to plan and commission, which we're doing today, and we are planning to schedule an October 5th, hopefully October 5th, hearing at the Board of Supervisors. It's not scheduled yet, but immediately following your decision on the project, we would plan to do that. It will be heard by the Board of Supervisors. This kind of an ordinance is required to have a minimum of one hearing versus, you know, some ordinance require two. This one requires one. So depending on the Board's action, I don't know if they would take that action in one day or in a follow-up, but that should give us ample time to get to the Board and complete that process with them. The ordinance is effective generally 30 days from the Board decision. There is a small portion of the parcels that would be affected that are in the coastal zone. We have met, discussed a few times during the processing with the Coastal Commission staff about the review that's required by them for that portion that's in the coastal zone. They have recommended and advised us that they believe it falls into something called a minor certification process, which is much speedier than what we're all used to and have been going through with several of our other full certification processes. So that would give us November and December to get their approval, which is doable.
Okay. Thank you. I have two final comments. One comment relates to something I feel is missing. There are two things I think are missing from the analysis. One is there's no analysis as it relates to parking. And I realize that parking does not necessarily have a direct nexus to individual residential unit development. But it is a problem in the community that's not, it's a constraint that's not adequately addressed here. What we do about it, I'll leave to people more knowledgeable than I am. The other thing, which I think is within the purview of what we're doing, and is, I had a lengthy discussion, I forgot to get ex parte discussions on the record earlier, so we can, maybe I ought to stop for just a second.
Mr. Chair, I don't believe that you need to do ex parte disclosures on an ordinance.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, County Council, but I think it's primarily on permit items.
Could you give me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, could you give me some more detail on that question?
The Director of the Sanitation District and the Water District.
Well, I think it's certainly, you can do it. It is, Ms. Black's right, it's not required.
Okay. Let's continue in the interest of some brevity, I suppose. The thing that is missing is what I would call the impact of redevelopment. We not only have, I mean, this all relates to new homes, but as far as impacts are concerned on the community, when you have a, what was a 2,800-square-foot home that's taken down, and now you put up a 10,000-square-foot home, as was put to me by the Sanitation District, you know, the argument is, well, there's still only two people living in the house, which may be true, except at Thanksgiving when they have a party for 250 people, and they're lined up, you know, 10-deep at all 10 bathrooms in the facility, and you have a peak-capacity requirement that needs to be met by the Sanitation District. Nowhere in this, that I could pick up, do we take into account the cumulative impact on our infrastructure of redevelopment, which historically, certainly over the last 10 years, has been an enormous component of the change in the community. So again, I would, I think you now have a list of things that I'd kind of like to have you respond to or comment on. And then just to finish out, my very last comment, it seems to me that we have, and it's particularly relevant right now, when we have very low demand for new permits, it seems to me we ought to have a threshold on the point system. That you can't come in, just because there aren't applicants, you ought to come in with a minimally acceptable project or you don't get it. And I don't, I haven't spent the time going through the point system and trying to analyze it to come up with what a minimum threshold number ought to be, but it seems to me that this would be a much more valuable tool to the community as a whole if we had something like that in it. And that would conclude my remarks. I'd be anxious to hear staff respond. Ms. Gottsner?
Yeah, I just, I wanted, I'm curious, I just wanted some clarification, Chairman, overall, because I think your last comment is like, I'm going, whoa, this is really interesting. When you say minimum thresholds, you mean to an individual, I mean, I don't, didn't quite understand your point of view on that one.
There needs to be some minimum number of points that a project earns in order to qualify for a, an allocation. You come in and you get rated for fire, water, and all these things. There ought to be some number below which you just don't have a viable project.
Isn't, oh, and that's not the way it works now? I mean, I, oh, no, it wouldn't, only if it's all nine or all 10 and there's, yeah.
I can speak to that.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to go back and touch on a couple of these things. First of all, what I heard, and this is all, these are all very thoughtful comments, I must say. What we addressed in your comments, this ordinance is narrowly structured to apply to new dwelling units in the community. That's exactly the same as the structure when we first adopted it in 1991. Commissioner, overall, I believe your comments address the potential of pulling in some other things like commercial uses, maybe institutional, and redevelopment of existing dwelling units. I understand the concern, but the program that we have been on for these last few months was to renew the existing ordinance, to look further into some of those other areas, would be basically changing the whole basic premise of what we adopted and have been living with for the last 20 years. And although it might be interesting to pursue what we could accomplish for those other types of uses and development, it clearly wouldn't be something that we could do within this timeframe. And our overarching program basically was to look to see if we could justify continuing the ordinance that we have, which is based on new residential units and based on a half a percent growth rate. So some of the very core elements of the ordinance that we already have in place, we have not opened up to review, except in, to some extent, in the alternatives in the SEIR. But it would be a much larger program, a much larger project to do that.
Just to be clear, and perhaps you are, I wasn't suggesting that we use the growth management ordinance to regulate in any way those kinds of development. I was simply suggesting that we take into account on the public services, what the impact of those kinds of developments do. How do they impact sewer? How do they impact water? How do they impact fire? That's all, and traffic.
Yes, and we will continue to monitor those. One of the benefits of the work that we've been doing in preparation for this extension is we've been in very frequent contact over the last several months with the agencies that you were just mentioning, with the sanitary district, fire district, the water district. And this document and our communications with them have really opened up lines of communication about what their needs are. Like, for example, in the sanitary district side of things, we began to understand by meeting with the sanitary district, the status of their infrastructure and where they're having difficulties with it, which is why we included it in the SEIR that's in front of you. We will continue to do that through our monitoring reports and annual reports at the Board of Supervisors. So that's something that we could develop and report on over time to the Board. So hopefully that would help. I mean, that's one of the beauties, I think, of a growth management ordinance, is it requires and leads you to be constantly taking a look at what that balance or imbalance is in the community and in terms of development and constraints overall, rather than project by project, which I think is a good thing. I did want to touch on a couple of other things you mentioned specifically about the Water District and Ordinance 89 and 90. Whereas we can't make decisions, and the Water District is independent and operates, you know, separately from the county. That being said, we have included in our revisions to the point criteria requirements that an applicant come to us with an approval or water certificate from the Water District and a copy of their proposed water conservation plan at the time that they apply for a growth management allocation, to better tie in the information that is being presented and relied upon in the county for our ultimate approval of any permits there and the Water District's approvals of their certificate. So it brings that information into us earlier- So it brings that information into us earlier and hopefully makes a better coordination between our two agencies earlier on. So we did include that. And it's correct, you know, we don't have a parking category in the growth management ordinance, but we do, of course, have the follow-up review as we do with all of these permits that are fully subject to all the community plan policies and ordinance standards when the applicant comes in and files their land use permit or clearance. And at that time, and I think, as you know, over the last few years, we've been careful to look at parking issues, particularly construction parking issues in the area, so that, that would continue. And you did have one point earlier on, I just wanted to touch on, about your concern about the infeasibility particularly of widening some of the roadways. We did recognize that in our draft findings and statement of overriding considerations, and we actually, even though that's in the environmental document, we have found that that is an infeasible mitigation because widening would be inconsistent with a specific policy that's in place in the Montecito community plan. So at least for that particular one, because of the adopted policy statement about that, we found that mitigation infeasible. So I think that covers it. If I didn't, we can follow up. Oh, I guess there is that, there is another point that you made about the minimum thresholds. I have a couple of comments, and then council may want to follow up. We don't have a minimum threshold, and to answer Commissioner Gottsner's question, when there's a tie, goes into this lottery system, if there's a tie of points. But what we do have now, as new language in the draft ordinance, is a requirement that any allocation that you receive be in substantial conformity with the project you ultimately submit for a permit. We closed a missing gap, let's say, in the ordinance in doing that, because if you get points for avoiding setbacks to repairing habitat, we want to see that when your application comes in, that it actually does that. So we did kind of tie up that more clearly together in the ordinance with this round of revisions. So although that's not a minimum threshold, I think it does help in another kind of way to say that if you come in and are you applying for certain points and trying to get priorities for doing these good things, which most often are above and beyond the basic minimum ordinance requirements, that you carry those commitments over to your land use permit. So we did add that.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, a couple of comments. One, on the idea of a minimum thresholds. Essentially, where, where the county does that and where that's normally done is, is in land use code or zoning ordinances, which is where we do that. We, we establish objective quantifications, standards, and those are legally supportable. It would be, it would take quite, I think, some more work to, to go back to this ordinance to establish any minimum thresholds, because you would, in that instance, possibly put the county to some legal exposure for a taking. And so we have to be extremely careful about, you can't build your house where it's zoned to build your house. And we would really have to go back to the drawing board to insert those, and probably insert those into the zoning code as opposed to the managed growth ordinance. The other comment is, I, you mentioned about the impacts of, of the Miramar and commercial and other kinds of projects, and the EIR does look at cumulative impacts, and it does take into account the existing water supply, the other, other uses. It looks at the ordinance, the relative, I'm sorry, relevant Montecito Water Agency ordinances, and even looks at very long-term cumulative impact constraints that was mentioned earlier regarding the delta smelt and some of the litigation about the delta. So there, there is some information there on cumulative impacts, and I, I think it's pretty extensive, and I think it, it can help explain what the current existing conditions are.
Thank you. Ms. Idelson?
Yep. I want to get back to this classification of impacts. This, as I understand it, the classifications could change in time, because like you said, the fire station, building another one, that would bring them down to a less than two. And each one of these, a water district, and so on, so on. Okay, would that be in the form, are you going to make that decision, or does that decision come to the planning commission or any, what agency? And is it published so that it's modified in the document?
I think the action that modifies this document has to be a public address.
Yeah, that, that is correct. We would not do any of that at staff level.
So it'd come to the supervisors?
It would come through a full hearing process if we did that.
Any one of those? So like, if, if water goes from, I'm thinking in terms of water going from a class two to a class one, what if that truly does happen? Would you then initiate the, the request that that be moved from a two to a one?
As council was describing a little bit earlier, once this document is certified by the Board of Supervisors as a result of this set of hearings, then it becomes a completed document. We don't reopen it unless it's part of a revision project to the ordinance itself. We don't independently update this document. We may report to the Board of Supervisors about certain restraint, constraints and, resource issues in Montecito, but that would be in the form of a separate report that's standalone. It wouldn't be by revising this document. It would be a separate board letter that we would be supplying them in those annual reviews. So this would not get updated again unless there was something that falls into the category of a project under SEQA, which is an actual wording change to the ordinance that we would be proposing. And if that occurred, it would follow exactly the same process that we're doing right now. It would come to your commission, and then it would go to the Board of Supervisors. So none of it would be done at staff level, and none of it would be done absent an actual proposal to change the ordinance itself.
Okay, so the class two water, which I think would have been a class one last year, had this thing gone a year earlier, and maybe we didn't have the foggy summer, and it could be a class one next year, this will come out in a, in what form?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Idelson, maybe, maybe just a different voice explaining it a little different way will help, because I think June's tried to answer this several times and, and has been pretty clear about it. There's a difference between the environmental document and the criteria that you, we're going to use to evaluate whether or not the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance should remain in effect. Once, once the Board of Supervisors certifies this EIR, this EIR will be essentially put on a shelf, used as a reference document, and we will be doing reports to the board as specified in the ordinance, updating the board as to the status of those constraint areas, including water. It won't be in the context of a class one or a class two impact, it'll be in the context of the provisions in the ordinance. So if the situation gets worse, it only supports maintaining the ordinance. If the situation gets better, then there's one issue off the table that supports retaining the ordinance and keeping it into place. But there are many issues that need to be resolved in order to lift the growth manag, abolish the growth management ordinance, and those are specified at the, at the end of the ordinance and the criteria necessary to eliminate the need for the growth management ordinance is included there. So I think it's just a totally different issue once we get through this adoption process. It's not a SEQA issue anymore, it's really an evaluation of the criteria. I hope that helps.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm ready to endorse it. Go ahead.
All right. Any other comments? Then I would make a motion that we accept staff recommendation. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
I have a second. All, we've all got it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? It passes unanimously. I believe there is no additional, I want to thank staff for your indulgence and your help. I think there is no further business, so if I can have a motion to adjourn, we will be finished for the day.
I'm adjourned.
Second? All in favor? Done.